Testing, okay. See here, it's a seven o'clock. We'll call the order. And if you'd join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Role call.
Yes, Councilmember Hay.
Here.
Councilmember Strowman, excused. Councilmember Engle.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Walker, here. Mayor Hagan.
Here. Well, tonight, we have a special presentation from county. Supervisor Rickman, you're here, and your crew. How would you like to start this thing?
We'll turn it over to our chairman.
Okay.
Thank you very much for having us.
Absolutely, appreciate you coming.
Hi, how are you guys? I'm obviously San Joaquin County Board Chair for San Joaquin County District Two, which is basically the city of Stockton. And so, this was my kind of cockamamie idea to do birthday parties all throughout the county. So, I want to thank our staff, obviously Supervisor Rickman and his lovely wife Karen Scott. And then we have Maria Brandy, and from the County Administrator's Office, our County Administrator, Sandy Regallo, and our historian from the Historical Society, Philip Merlo. And Katie is somewhere, or PIO is behind us. And then we have the Clerk's Office, we have Rochelle and Chelsea in the back there. So, we've been celebrating San Joaquin County's 175th anniversary. So, I want to say, though, that you guys are probably the most warming of all because I got a police escort by the police chief because the maps took me to the old City Hall. So, he might have let me run through a stop sign because I was looking for y'all. So, this is the first time I got a police escort. So, thank you very much to the Chief of Police and your hospitality, Escalon. But what we've been doing is, I mean, the county's an amazing place. And so, I thought during the 175th anniversary, we would come and share in our municipalities because I think it's, I was on the Stockton City Council, and obviously, he was the mayor, Tracy. But it's the small government folks like you that make our county great. Driving out here, we drove past all the farms and the fields. And it's just a reiteration of, you know, our $3.02 billion that we ship all throughout the world from San Joaquin County and the businesses and the transportation that we have. So, we'll, I'll turn it over to Supervisor Rickman. And then Philip Merlo is going to say a lot. This, this young man is an amazing human being from the Historical Society. And his family is long-lived, and he has a breath of fresh air to share with all of you. But on behalf of the San Joaquin County and 175 years, we did, we did a little art competition, too, because the original county seal was done by June, and I forget her last name, but she was a rip and roll.
Sorry about that.
No, it's fine. Yeah, sorry. I bring out the vesting, everybody, don't worry. So, we did a seal, and it was really neat that she did the 175th. Somebody calling in? They got their kids talking in the background? It's all good. So, anyway, we did 175th anniversary competition, and it was just really reassuring. The girl was from juvenile hall, and she did the seal. And it just goes to show that, you know, people in our community are resilient and that I think it's important that we celebrate everybody, and that's why we're here to celebrate with you. So, thank you so very much.
Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Mayor, and Council and staff for, you know, allowing us to present here and be here with you tonight. You know, what a great night, you know, to celebrate not just one, but two milestones in our shared history. 175 years of San Joaquin County and 128 years since the founding of Escalon in 1897, which later became incorporated as a city in March 12th, 1957. Escalon was founded by farmers and families who believed in faith, family, friendship, and hard work. Escalon has grown from a small farming settlement into a proud, close-knit city, a place where neighbors still wave, kids can still play in the park, and community still means something. You can feel it in every handshake, every Friday night at the football game, go Cougars, and every local parade. This is a town that shows up for one another. Escalon embodies the best of San Joaquin County. Strong values, rich history, and a determination to make each generation better than the last. So, we honor the past today, but let us all remember the lesson the past has taught us. Hard work matters. Faith matters. Family and community matters. And our best days are still ahead of us all. So, happy 175th birthday, and God bless Escalon, God bless San Joaquin County, and God bless the great nation that we live in. So, thank you.
Hi, folks. My name's Philip Merlo. I'm the Executive Director of the San Joaquin County Historical Museum. We're, we are in Mickey Grove Park, but we, we do a lot down here in Escalon. And you might know us through Valley Days, which is a third-grade program for, I think, pretty much everybody in Escalon Unified School District. This whole year, we've been going around to the different cities and talking about the historical significance of San Joaquin County. And I think when, when San Joaquin County was first founded in 1849, 1850, the founder of Stockton and the person that really conceived of San Joaquin County, his name was Charles Weber. And he thought of San Joaquin County and this area as a gateway to prosperity, a gateway for, where people from all around the world would, would come and start farms, start small businesses, and find their American dream. And they didn't necessarily have those terms, but that, that was really the, the theory behind this, this, this land. And I think that San Joaquin County, oftentimes at the museum, we like to talk about how this, this area has a lot of nationally significant history. If you think about the, the development of the California industrial model and agriculture and all the wonderful small business farms that we have across this region, talk about the processing plants. You know, this whole entire region has been feeding America for a long time. Right? And I think that whether, and that, you know, provided a lot of jobs for people in diaspora communities that have immigrated to the United States and come and, and lived here. And I think that Escalon is a big part of that history. Obviously, when you, when you, when you're driving here, right? I mean, all of the incredible agricultural land, the processing plants that you pass by, you know, it's really a special community. I have some interesting ties to Escalon, and I'm not going to talk too much about Escalon's history because we've got David Russell here in the back from the Escalon Historical Society, yeah? And who can, who can, knows more about Escalon than I ever will. But I have a, I have a personal tie to Escalon. John Jones, the founder of Escalon and his son, James Jones, they, they saw the word Escalon in the Stockton Free Public Library, right? And they saw the word, and it meant stepping stone, la escalone, right, in Spanish? And they said, okay, we've got this settlement, and it's out in southeast San Joaquin County, and it's, we think it's going to be a big town, it's going to be the stepping stone between the gold mines and the, and the coast, which ended up becoming, right? And, and still is. And, and it's, and we're going to name the town Escalon. And my family, this is the first place that we came through from, we actually visited or came to California through the east. We were gold miners in the 1880s and 1890s, Italian immigrants from St. Louis and from Milan. And all of my family and all of the families from our village, we were in Escalon for 15 years, and it was, it was our stepping stone to California and stepping stone to prosperity. So, Escalon will always have a soft place in my heart. And, you know, we, going back to gateways to prosperity, I think Escalon to this day is a place where people can start a, start a business and, and find their American dream. So, with that, I'll pass the mic. Because we're, we're giving it to David, right?
Yes.
All right, Dave, you're up.
Does everyone know the meaning of "bitesided"? That's, that's what this "bitesided" is. But I have something to say. I'm here as representing the Escalon Historical Society, and I've been the president for about four or five years now, I stopped counting. And this is my life back here with the funny glass that I'm standing. She's our administrator.
Office manager.
Office manager. And Dorothy Miller, I think, is still here. Dorothy is our curator. Our vice president is Barbara Langham. And we all volunteer at the museum downtown on First and Main. First and Main, can't miss it. We have a lot of fun. It's, it's difficult maintaining our old building, but other than that, it's a lot of fun. And I wish I had prepared more for this evening because I have prepared absolutely nothing. But if there's any questions, I'd be happy to engage. Oh, that's good.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor, we'll wrap it up here. And so, on behalf of our chairman, the rest of the board of supervisors, and the county of San Joaquin, it's our honor to present the certificate of recognition to the city of Escalon on the occasion of San Joaquin County's 175th anniversary. Escalon's deep respect for tradition, spirit of generosity, and its culture of prosperity have made it one of California's friendliest and most welcoming cities, as evident that our chairman runs a red light and our police chief brings him over. A place where family, faith, education, and the arts are held dear by all. Anchored by our motto, stepping stone to the Central Valley, Escalon stands as a beacon of growth, connection, and promise. Our identity as the land of peaches and cream reflects not only the beauty of our surrounding, but also the richness of our agricultural heritage and the warmth of our community. On this sixth day of October, 2025, the county of San Joaquin proudly recognizes the city of Escalon for its rich heritage, lasting contributions, and unwavering dedication to its community. Signed by our chairman, Paul Canapa, and myself, Fifth District, Robert Rickman. Mr. Mayor?
He's coming up, too.
He's ready?
Yes.
And flash. Everybody blinked.
Oh, you're a kid, you're a kid.
Supervisor Rickman, hold on one sec. We have a proclamation for you. We just wanted to say thank you. And as Mayor of, City of Escalon, on behalf of the Escalon City Council, we do recognize and celebrate San Joaquin County's remarkable history. And it's an enduring spirit, the contributions of all of those who have made this place an awesome place to live and grow for the generations and hopefully generations after us. So, we want to say our kind of special thank you to you for coming our direction.
Here, let's get a picture of him.
Right? Got everything in the background, looks good. Well, that was an experience you don't see too often, right there, 175 years. So, we'll move on, I guess, to the consent calendar. Do we want to pull anything?
Mayor, we do have a comment from one of the council members indicating that there was a requested change on the minutes, that one of their comments was not exactly how they meant it. And so, we have made that note. It's in regard to the pool item and the fact that the city should not pay 40%. And it's meant to say the city should not pay the entire cost of the pool demolition. So, we have made that comment, and if you can approve as amended, if you choose, we will make that change.
Okay. I don't have a problem with it.
Is the amendment already written in here? Okay. So, what is the amendment? It just says the intention of what was stated. Was that the?
Yeah. I'm finding it here.
Just so people are aware, we're not paying the pool.
No, we are not.
I'm just curious.
There's probably some confusion.
On page 13, third paragraph, second sentence, he noted the pool is in critical need of upgrades, but doesn't believe the city should bear 40% of the cost to repair. Indicated that the city shouldn't pay the entire cost for the repair is what was indicated to us.
Okay.
Okay, so it'll say that he intended something else?
Yeah. He intended the pool is in critical need and upgrades, but doesn't believe the city should bear the entire cost of repair.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, so, so we can revise our statements based on our intent rather than what we said? Just curious.
We absolutely try to be accurate because it is an accurate. The intent of minutes are to tell people what happened at the meeting. We went back and listened. There are a lot of, you know, kind of overriding and conflicting things said, right? And we believe that it's the intent of the statement.
Perfect.
But to answer your question, the council shouldn't approve minutes that misstate the record.
Makes sense.
So, but obviously, the city manager reviewed the tape and thinks there's enough in there to support that.
I trust the city manager's judgment on it. Do we have any first or second?
I'll, I'll motion to approve as amended.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay. So, we're on to staff communications, it looks like. City Manager?
We'll start on that side of the table.
Evening, everyone. We have our reports for the next meeting. As we just closed the month, I really don't have anything exciting to report. We are ongoing with our audit, to the two different audits that we're doing right now. Lot thickens, you know? Is there any questions, though, about the, anything that we have going on right now?
So, we have begun the, the next audit, even though we haven't finished the prior, the one we've been working on.
Yeah. The, the cycle that everything has to follow in order to get this done timely, we are beginning the current, the year that just closed. We here in the office are doing all that, and we're waiting to give that over to the auditor until they get the first audit that they have on their plate done, just not to confuse them in any way. But yeah, we, we have that pretty much ready to go.
Do you think?
I appreciate the efficiency, yeah. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, do you think that we should expect a much faster approach this time because they were just trying to clean up the, or understand our budget prior?
Yes, I do expect it to be a much faster audit. This, quite a lot of the time that we have is the setup.
Gotcha.
And it, it's quite lengthy.
Okay, thank you.
And just to elaborate on that, a lot of what an audit does is look back at past audits. And if there's questions and information is not being shared as readily as they would like, it causes delays and questions. And so, if an audit is relying on their own word from the past audit, it goes a lot smoother, a lot quicker. So, yes, we expect a much quicker turnaround for the next audit.
I guess we'll go to Chief now.
Not much for me. On October 24th, we're going to be having a coffee with the cop over at McDonald's from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. So, anybody interested in?
This is for anyone in the public who wants to come, right?
Anyone in the public.
All right. And do you know who will be there? Is it with you?
That'll be me and probably at least one of my sergeants, if not both, and then some officers. So, right now, I don't know exactly who's going to be there. I will be there as well as some other officers.
Sounds good. Any questions for Chief? Public Works?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Quickly, just to follow up to a question that was asked last meeting, as far as do we have ADA compliance sidewalks at Hogan Park? And we do have ADA compliance sidewalks that do lead us to the covered area, to the bathroom, to the playground, to the snack bar, and to the bleachers at the sports field. That's all Public Works has this evening.
Any other questions for Public Works? Okay, anything you would like to add?
Two items. Yeah, two items. Just a note to the community that the Murphy Ranch residential, proposed residential development is going to Planning Commission October 14th. So, that's next Tuesday, and that'll go to Planning Commission, Escalon City, excuse me, Escalon Planning Commission. And then, if the commission makes a positive recommendation, it'll go to, well, it'll go to the city council anyway. But Planning Commission, then City Council, Planning Commission October 14th. And then, one other note. The city, in coordination with the Economic Development Committee and through some parts of Measure P, not financially, but just in principle, are looking at beautifying the city in, in ways. And so, one of the things that we'll do is send out a letter to business and maybe property owners about ways that we can beautify the city and hopefully help drive more economic development, more business to the businesses that are already existing and potentially new businesses. So, a letter will go out to business owners in the next week or so, kind of touching on that topic.
Sounds good. Any questions for the city manager? Anyone in the public like to ask the staff a question at all? No? Anything online? No?
No hands raised.
All right, we'll bring it back to matters presented from the audience. Excuse me. The public may address the city.
He has a public comment, I believe.
A public comment?
Yep.
Oh, hold on, let me, I gotta make the statement first.
I'm sorry.
You can come up first, though. The public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the city of Escalon. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record, however, it is not required due to state, excuse me, due to state law, action will not be taken on any item that is not on the agenda, and except for brief responses, the council is prohibited from discussing any item not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. The determination of whether an item is within the subject matter of the city is a discretionary decision made by the mayor at this point.
Thank, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Sorry to interrupt you. I thought you were moving to the next agenda item.
Oh, you're fine, not a problem.
I'm Nate Nott. I'm actually from Acacia Street in Stockton near Victory Park. And actually, I get to see these gentlemen everywhere. I've been almost on the same speaking tour. And I'm a member of the San Joaquin County Historical Society. Anyway, I'm here to speak about, I'm a public advocate for public transit. I worked for San Joaquin RTD for 17 years. I do want to make it a very strict point here. I'm speaking as an independent citizen on my own. I am not speaking for RTD, but I am a public advocate of public transportation. I want to speak to a letter that was written back on August 14th by the city manager of Lathrop, Stephen Salvatore, and eventually distributed to other cities. I should point out that I'm from French Camp, California's oldest inland settlement, 1828. That would be 197 years ago. When I was with RTD, I was there for 17 years, 12 years as Director of Planning. And I came to Escalon many times to conduct public hearings and unmet transit needs and did a transit fair here. I rode the route 95 several times, helped design the original route that went from Escalon to Manteca to the county hospital. And I also rode service that has existed between Escalon and Modesto. So, having said all that, and I delivered flowers here from my parents' flower shop years ago. And I broadcast a live football game from the Escalon Cougars Stadium as a high school student years ago. Anyway, what I wanted to speak to in this letter is Mr. Salvatore used data from right after service was restarted after COVID. Some of these routes had not operated for a full year, even two years. And he used these data back in August of this year, used data from 2022 to paint a worst-case scenario of RTD operating a transit catastrophe using terrible ridership numbers. I can tell you, when you restart a transit service after two or years of inactivity, it is not going to have a lot of ridership out off the bat. Transit's a relatively complicated system to market. You can't market it as a single item like a bar of soap. So, when you put service out there, it hasn't been out there for a while. It takes a while for the public to learn the schedules, the routes, and what you're offering. If you took today's data, the ridership numbers would be two, three, and even four times better than what he used in that letter, even though he used that letter just a couple of months ago. He also said that RTD should not operate intracity services. They should only do intercity services. Well, if you're going to operate service between cities, say Manteca and Escalon, you're not going to pick up people at the BNSFA railroad tracks and then drop them off at Austin Road in Manteca. You're going to operate within those cities to get people from one downtown center or transit hub to the other city's key destinations. So, and then he goes on to say, yeah, you don't drop people off and have them hitchhiker take a lift into the middle of town. He states that RTD could operate all of its countywide services without LTF money. Well, I can tell you, having worked in transit for 17 years, that that would not be possible. I can also tell you, and you can look it up on the state website, that the LTD, LT money, local transit funding, which is part of the State Transportation Development Act, its primary purpose is to fund public transportation. As it is, in most cases, after unmet transit needs hearings, which usually wind up with comments and findings that, the findings are unreasonable to meet, that most of that money filters into roads and streets anyway. Transit doesn't usually get even half of that. It also happens to be true that, and because I was part of this, it was a rather painful process, RTD streamlined the routes within most of the county cities back in 2005 to reduce the services within the cities, to make them more streamlined and straight, reduce costs, also not to compete with systems within those cities such as Lowlight Gray Plough and Manteca Transit, Tracy Tracer. If you look at RTD statistics, they carry 86% of the passengers in San Joaquin County that ride transit, and they have far better cost per passenger funding, far better cost per passenger statistics than the local transit. And they have far better cost per passenger funding, uh, far better cost per passenger statistics than the local transits. And that is not to knock the local system at all. I'm just making that comparison as a matter of providing information. RTD now carries about 3 million people a year. In its heyday, before online shopping and before reductions of online enrollment at Delta College and various other things that happened, and the economic meltdown back in 2008, which caused huge transit cutbacks in 2009, RTD's carried as many as 5 million people in a calendar year. And those long 60-foot buses that bend in the middle have at times operated standing room only. I don't think most people are aware of that. To attract new rider, and Mr. Salvatore apparently doesn't want RTD to expand services. But since COVID, ridership on transit has changed. No longer do people ride just during peak hours. People actually want transit, but they want it all day long. And the services that have come back the most with the most ridership are services that have provided relatively good frequent service all throughout the day. I will point out the current route 95 operates from, service from 7:00 AM in the morning to 7:30, 6:00 PM, with trips about every hour and a half. If I'm going over time, please stop me. I don't see a clock anywhere, so.
Oh, give you a little, little more time.
Am I, am I up, up to my time?
Yeah, you're getting close.
Well, thank you so much. I will mention one last thing. I've never heard anyone complain about roads that are empty. And the county of San Joaquin, not, and this is true throughout the US, a lot of paved roads are actually glorified driveways to people's homes, but I never hear the complaint about funding for that. Thank you very much. I'm sorry I went over.
You're fine. Thank you. Anyone else have any matters from the audience or anything they wanna present? No? Okay, anything online?
No hands raised.
All right, we'll bring it back to public hearings. We don't have any. Bring it back to administrative matters. We'll start on number four.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to introduce something that occurs every three years generally. There will be a public hearing. It is scheduled for the November 3rd meeting. This would be an ordinance because it would change our municipal code to reflect the new building codes as adopted by the state. So the state, every three years, to maintain best practices, to ensure life safety, health issues, they go through a periodic review, again, every three years of the building, fire, and other codes. And so 2025 is the next time we are scheduled to adopt, with 2022 being the last cycle. And so you will see in the staff report, there are a couple of mentions that we think are noteworthy. And then also, in the staff report item, there is about a 70-page document. It's called Summary of California Code Changes in the 2025 Edition of Title 24 that goes through and highlights, summarizes all the changes that are made. We do have our consultant, CSG, in the room here to answer any questions that the council may have on this code update.
Anything up here? Questions or concerns?
Sure. Just a quick question. In, in the changes for, for this cycle, is there anything that the city of Escalon considers to be an upcoming issue?
I think that's a great question, and I'll turn it over to Brian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Brian Bell with CSG Consultants. To answer your question more directly, Mr. Engel, there are various changes to the code that would be of, of note. The staff report does identify various noteworthy changes, as Jalen has identified. The changes in themselves, increased energy efficiencies. There is a format change specifically to the code body itself, more administrative-type changes. But by and large, some fire protection measures for various types of structures, exterior stairways, as well as continuity issues for firewalls. So all things pertinent to, of course, the city of Escalon, but nothing to, would, I guess, jump out as, as a major concern, if you will, for the community?
Very good. Thank you.
Welcome.
Anything else up here? Okay, we'll take it out to the public. Any concerns, questions, anything like that? No? Okay, we'll bring it back to online.
Nothing online. No hands raised online.
Okay, back to the dais. Any thoughts or anyone want to bring this to closure?
Sure. I'll motion to waive the first reading of this ordinance, amending Escalon Municipal Code, Chapter 15, Buildings in Construction by Adopting the Reference California Building Standards 2025 Edition, Title 24 of the California Code of Regulations with Amendments and Other Uniform Codes.
Second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay. So we'll go on to number five.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. This item, which is to introduce and discuss the city's recreation program fees, is being brought forward in a couple, for a couple of different reasons. Periodically, staff has brought all fees before the council for consideration. Some fees are brought forth annually. Some of the more used fees are brought forward periodically. In addition, at the last meeting, Councilmember Engel suggested and was supported that the recreation fees should come forward. So for both of those reasons, this is, this item is coming forward. Over the last couple, things here, over the last several years, staff has really worked with the community and with the Recreation Commission to make improvements to the recreation program overall. Some progress, we believe, is being made, and of course, there's still, you know, room to grow and room to improve. What we hear a lot, and the reasons we've made some of these changes are direct input from the Recreation Commission and the community at, at large. And a lot of what we believe we hear is there's a desire for more amenities in the program and a little bit higher quality in some areas, whether it's refting, coaching support, fields, equipment, those types of things. And so what that means is some level of investment in the program, again, we believe. Now, that is not universal. There are absolutely some people in the community who love the program that is provided and desire to keep it as low cost as possible. What we have provided in the staff report is comparisons of our rates in these four charts across the four sports that we provide. So we do run the soccer program, the baseball softball, flag football, and basketball. And we have gathered information from communities around us and the rates that, that they charge. The last time the fees were increased is 2018, and much of that is conscious decision, right? This item has been brought before the council, and there hasn't been a desire to increase the rates then. And that is something that is gonna be weighed in this conversation and, and any future conversations at the council's discretion. It should be noted, in the last budget, we report that there is a subsidy of about $200,000 for the recreation program. So if you look at revenue generated versus cost expended, including indirect costs, so that's all the staff time, insurance, electricity, printers, you know, all of that, there's a subsidy of about $200,000 for the recreation program. And so the intent, as was stated at the beginning, is to put this in front of the council again, again, as we have periodically over time, and introduce the topic, and then have the council, if desired, provide any direction to staff on next steps.
I'll turn it over to Councilman Engel.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanna start by saying that I think that the, the recreation program in Escalon is, is fantastic. And, and by no means, I wanna say that loud and clear up front, for the residents of the city of Escalon, I, I don't wanna see any additional increase to fees for our recreation program. However, as, as we look at these other municipalities, we see that we are the cheapest. And what that's done, in my opinion, is drawn folks from those other communities into our program in order to save money. I believe that's also expanded our program to create additional stresses upon our fields and our, our other related services, as well as additional workforce staff. So when I brought it up at the last meeting, my intent and my thought was that fees stay the same for Escalon residents. However, anybody coming into our town, we should, we shouldn't be subsidizing folks from surrounding communities. So I think that the, the fee for them needs to be adjusted to be more in line with these other municipalities. And that should help to offset some of what we are supplementing these, you know, non-residents with by providing a reduced fee. Again, I think, I think the program's great. I, I think it's, it's picked up a lot over the last several years and is doing extremely well. But I don't think that other communities should utilize our goodwill and funds for their benefit.
I mean, I would generally agree with you, I think. The only caveat to it would be people that are tied to the town that would be living, say, technically outside that sphere. How would we address that, you think?
Well, so I think an easy way is if, these are all school-aged children, so if they are enrolled in Escalon Unified, I think that's qualification enough.
That seems fair to me, yeah. Okay. Any, any thoughts on that?
Do we currently charge out-of-city participants a fee over and beyond those who are in the city of Escalon?
There's a small fee between $5 and $10 for those outside of the city limits. Outside of the school district, I believe.
Yes, Mr. Trejo. Was, is that Mr. Trejo?
No.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Apologize. I thought you were someone else. My vision's not very good. Get my sunglasses on for my prescription. Sorry about that. Never mind, I thought it was Danny. Okay, never mind.
A couple of comments, just because I think they need to be stated. These, these charts that, that were presented to us are a great source of information. And one thing that I do wish that they had is the comparison that I just, you know, did by hand here. For flag football, we are paying $174 per, per athlete. They are paying 65. Soccer, $162 per athlete, 75. Baseball, 204, we're paying 80. Basketball's the closest, $99 is what we're paying for, per athlete, 65 is, is what the, the fee for it is. That can't continue, not, not at that kind of rate. And it is not that I wanna price anyone out of being able to play in recreation sports whatsoever, but to the, the cost of $200,000 a year, I mean, that, that's a pretty substantial chunk of change. And as Councilmember Engel stated, how, how much of that is for non-residents of Escalon that aren't contributing to our tax base whatsoever? So I just wanted to kinda point out those, those numbers in a, in a direct side-by-side. I mean, that's, you know, pretty eye-opening to see. We're only collecting about a third of, you know, a third to, to a half of what it is that each athlete is costing for them to be able to play. I just don't think that that can continue in the long term. There, there has to be some kind of change there.
Well, I'm thinking the best way to do any kind of change here would be, you know, phase one, I think, would be looking at, like, what Councilmember Engel saying, and then reevaluating it each year. It seems like we do that anyways.
Right.
And kinda see where our program's at once that decision's been made, is kinda what I was thinking, but unless you guys see something different, you know?
I, I, I agree if we do and when we do. We have been in the past incrementally increasing. It doesn't usually jump, doesn't double. And if we do need to increase, I would support doing a small increment at a time. I don't necessarily consider the indirect costs fully, like, it should not be fully included in, in the recreational fees. That's just a personal belief of mine. And doing the quick math, it's coming out to per-player costs across each sport to be about $100 if you ta, per, per, per player, if you take out those indirect costs. I think that's, it's very, it's not very clear what indirect costs actually mean. And we are considering some of those that are used for other purposes or their staff time that's coming out of general fund already, which this is their job that they're already being paid for. And so I guess that's my point of view. That's kind of an observation that I make.
Makes sense. Yeah, obviously, the development of children is, and their ability to be out with their, their buddies and, and learn in a group environment plays a big role in how community develops. And, and so I think it, of all the areas that you would potentially be okay with subsidy, this would be one for me. So I can't, I kinda think that what Mr., or Councilman Engel's saying is, is right, where I kind of align with the, with the thought as well. Provided that we make sure that the school district's involved, like you were saying.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I fully agree. I, I, in general, am not a big believer in government subsidy. However, I am a big proponent of our youth. And the fact that we can make this affordable for families and get them all to come out in a recreation league, right? So non-competitive, just with the ability to, to, to exercise, to learn, and to gain additional friends, teammates, and, and participate in our community is well worth some form of subsidy. What I'm thinking, you know, initially is, we look at these lower numbers, I just thought my screen was touchscreen. That didn't work. You know, when we start looking at like soccer, for example, we see Riverbank being the lowest, and ours is a 40, 45. I think, you know, that the numbers that Melinda just mentioned, you know, our cost, if, if we at least cover the cost for the non-residents, I think that's a step in the right direction, as well as like escalating fees. That doesn't necessarily have to be a conversation I think you had tonight, but I, I do think long-term, we do need to be on some form of incremental schedule that, that does show a year-over-year increases, whether it's $2 or $5. If we put that out now, families will have plenty of time to acclimate to that and make those adjustments, cause they'll see them coming. They'll know every year it's gonna go up, whatever it is, $2, $5, and they'll be able to budget for that accordingly. So not just with, with soccer, but all of these others, I'm trying to look at two different things at once, my apologies. You know, that $100 mark, if that covers it, even for baseball, what, did you see something there?
So I'm looking at price per, per-player cost here, which is taking total expenses divided by players. I'm taking total expenses, subtracting indirect costs out of that, and dividing it by how many players. It's coming out.
To about $100?
Well, some, ones, I think it was soccer's 90, and baseball softball is 110-ish. I don't, I didn't write down my numbers, but they're right around that $100 mark.
Okay, well, that, that solves it up for me. I, I personally like that $100 fee.
Mr. City Manager, can I ask a quick question? These, these indirect costs, can you give us some kind of idea as to, especially with soccer, why it's so high and what it actually is there?
Yeah, so there is just cost to run the city, and that cost is generally distributed across all departments. So we're talking in things like salaries, our insurance, workman's comp, copiers, buildings, community center, the corp yard, electricity, just everything it costs to run the city is distributed across the departments.
Hypothetical for you. So yeah, fair to say we had no rec at all? These costs would still be baked in the cake, is that right? For the most part?
Yeah, I mean, if we had no rec at all, we would have fewer staff. We'd have fewer, you know.
So generally speaking, there's a little?
Generally, a little lower workman's comp. You know, things would be a little bit. Generally, a little lower workman's comp, you know, things would be a little bit lower.
Gotcha.
I will just add that the theory behind charging non-residents a higher amount is that non-residents are not contributing to your tax basis, right? So the residents are already in some form or fashion paying for these programs, whether they use them or not. So this is really intended to even out the scales a little bit. You don't want it to be on the order of, like, 3X. For example, three times, you want to try to keep it within a reasonable range, but you can, for various reasons, including the fact that they're not paying, they're not contributing to tax base, you have scarce resources, you want to prioritize Escalonian students, just be residents. The key is you want to make sure you define Escalon residents very clearly, so it's obviously not, there's not any ambiguity for the public. But the potential numbers that is being discussed are within, I think, a realm of reason.
I think one of the big things I see is stabilizing the current numbers, because our, until we have some changes in field use and things where we can really, you know, have an expanding program, we don't want to end up, you know, having to replace the grass every year and all that kind of stuff, I guess is my concern. So I think there's some, a lot of validity to what Councilman Ingalls is saying. Any other questions up here before I go out to the public? Anyone in the public have some thoughts on this or comments? No? Any online? All right, we'll bring it back to the dais. Any last-minute thoughts or...
Just a quick question on flag football and basketball. There's not a number there for sponsors. We do take sponsors, though, correct, for jerseys and whatnot?
So since we have moved to NFL flag football and junior NBA, we have less sponsorships, no sponsorships for jerseys. And in those two sports, we really don't have the banner sponsor, so, yeah, I mean, I'd say it's zero sponsorship right now. We're working on figuring out ways to get other sponsorship types.
So the banner is under baseball softball, is that correct?
Yeah.
But it is the same park that is flag football and soccer, so you could almost spread that across. I mean, that would increase baseball softball per player, but lower for flag and soccer.
Yeah.
I mean, okay. But we typically seek those out for baseball and softball, correct?
Yep.
Season, I mean?
Yep.
And they stay all, one full year? Is that how that works?
They usually stay for the season, a little after, a couple of weeks after the season. So if it's, if they sponsored for baseball, it's stay up during baseball, maybe a week or two beyond, and then it would come down.
Okay, so they're down at this point? There's no banners up there?
Uh, no, I believe there are still some banners. Soccer just ended, and flag football's coming up, so within the next week, they'll be taken care of.
Okay, so soccer does have banners up?
There was banners up this year, yes.
It is? Okay.
Not sure if they were from baseball, or if they were just left or not, can't tell you that, but yes, they are on the fence.
I think this year, we've implemented a year-round banner sponsor to try to get different, but these are for last year's program.
I'm not against that, I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify, like, just the numbers and how they're allocated.
And I'm clarifying, yeah, the fact that I answered that we didn't. This year, we have a new, so you'll see those numbers in next year, but in prior years, it was mostly for baseball.
Okay.
All righty. Any last thoughts or any kind of motions?
I, I think I need a number for what we currently are charging out-of-town residents, but I'm not against increasing that fee for those out-of-town residents, as they're not in our tax base, and they're not, I would actually forgive those who are within Escalon Unified School District as well.
Is, is that the motion?
There's no motion, because I don't even, I don't, I...
Waiting for some numbers first.
Yeah, well, I kind of like that, too, in the sense that if each one has a different associated cost, that the minimum should be that it covers our cost, so there is no subsidy for any one of those programs for non-residents.
I would agree with that.
Is there a way to verbalize that into a motion?
I think you just did.
Okay, so motioned.
Yeah. I was going to say, I think if there's consensus, that direction would probably work, because this would have to come back as part of the fee schedule for approval anyways, so they can...
Do you want to just table it till we have an answer?
Table it, you can give direction to him, so he can move forward with it. I'm just saying you're not approving the fee schedule tonight.
Gotcha.
Make a, someone could say, you know, General, or Councilmember Ingalls, you can say it again, and then if we see enough head nods, we can move forward with that.
Okay. Well, as far as direction, what I'd like to see is verbiage to include Escalon residents as defined by enrollment in Escalon Unified, as well as a fee increase for each individual sport that covers a minimum of our actual cost. And, oh, sorry.
Minus indirect costs, or including indirect costs.
Oh, no, you, yeah, okay, yeah, indirect cost as well, how about that? Yeah, I think, I think we're still, I think we're still a fair price. We're still cheaper than Modesto or Oakdale. Yeah, why not?
One thing I did want to mention is, when we talk about the schools, making sure that you're talking about homeschool kids, too, in town, because you have Unified School District, would that encompass those children also living within the city limits, or...
So if we could also add verbiage, so if they weren't, so maybe they were with, what's the, Something Waters?
Connecting Waters.
Connecting Waters, if they were with them, but they were out of series or something, either enrollment in Escalon Unified or a 95320 ZIP code?
Sounds fair. Okay. All righty.
Are all of those individuals part of the tax basis? Escalon, probably not, right?
Hmm, probably not.
No, not outside of city limits.
If, once we go outside of the tax basis, we have to try to keep the numbers a little bit closer together. And I'm concerned that if we want a fully-loaded cost burden for out-of-area people, then we're approaching something larger, a larger disparity between Escalonians and non-Escalonians.
Well, as far as not part of our tax base, you know, somebody outside of city limits may not be paying, you know, property tax to us, but we are their local, closest local gas station.
Yeah.
Supermarket, restaurant. So it'd be my belief that those folks are still providing a tax base.
They probably are, yeah. Okay, I just don't like to see a huge disparity between Escalonians and non-Escalonians. The city absolutely has the right to have a...
For moral or legal reasons?
For legal reasons.
Okay.
I'm the city attorney, not the city moralist.
So what, what are the, what are the legal ramifications of that?
Well, I mean, just generally speaking, we have a lot of discretion, but generally speaking, there are, there's an equal protection issue. Now, city, not Escalonians versus non-Escalonians is not a protected category under the Constitution, okay, under the equal protection clause. And so there's three, this is like constitutional law 101. There are three levels of scrutiny that the court applies when they look at the way people discriminate among groups, and discriminate not in a pejorative sense, just when you distinguish between categories. If you distinguish between race, for example, that's going to receive strict scrutiny. You have to, you have a compelling overriding reason to do it as an agency. And then there's things that are intermediate scrutiny, that would be gender is one of them. And then the third category, which receives the least scrutiny, is, it's just called the rational basis test. You want to have a rational basis, whereas you're, why you're treating Escalonians different from non-Escalonians, and that's...
Geographical discrimination, is that what you're saying?
So that would be my rationale or my argument, is that if folks inside the 95320 that don't reside inside a city that is allowed to serve on the Recreation Commission, their children, too, should be able to participate in that program.
Yeah, and I think what we need to do then is, when we bring this back to the council for approval, we will have a resolution, and we will articulate the reasons why, other than just we prefer Escalonians over non-Escalonians, which I'm not hearing the council say.
No, I think that what this comes down to is not subsidizing...
Correct.
...out of, people that don't live in our town with tax dollars that are gained in this town.
Well, the big problem is, we're seeing it expand, which is a good thing, but now we're hitting critical mass. Until we can problem-solve some of the field use stuff, we're going to end up creating a hindrance to the locals that actually do live here, and potentially have a negative effect, is what I'm concerned about.
I just wanted to just flag it.
Makes sense, though.
Thanks, Rick.
All right, so do we have enough consensus there, then, to move forward?
So are we, so, athletes, participants, I guess, that do not live within 95320 and do not, are not enrolled in Escalon Unified School District, will be charged the costs as mentioned in the, is that what we're trying to do?
Yeah, the actual cost, including indirect.
The actual per-player cost, and we're doing including indirect. Substantial.
Redu, this is my opinion, but reducing the amount of participants reduces our amount of subsidy, reduces the impact to our fields and our staff. So if we were to thin that herd just a little bit, and we narrowed it down to folks that just want to play because their cousin plays here, or they have friends that play here, I think they may be willing to pay that difference, because in some instances, we would still be substantially less than the nearest municipalities.
Okay. Okay, but the, so we're not going to skew it for age brackets? Like, T-ball is not going to be lower than 14U? And that's...
As I'm looking at soccer, is that, no, you're talking baseball, she said T-ball.
Well, any of them, they're all, they all start at four years old and go to about 15, you know?
I'm trying to scroll my screen again.
So it almost makes sense to do, like, a percentage basis, but I understand the rationale of just trying to get it per player.
Yeah, yeah, I, you know, if we look at, you know, colleges, for instance, right, you're paying out-of-state fee, you pay more, because you're going to school out-of-state. I kind of see it the same here. I'm not a big, I don't want to subsidize other communities, I want to prioritize Escalon residents first, and make sure that they have a hearty, well-engaged, and funded program, and let Riverbank, Oakdale, Ripon, and Modesto worry about their own.
Yeah, I'm willing to have staff investigate this and bring it back for the discussion and see where we go.
Okay, then.
Clear as mud?
Enough consensus?
Clear as mud.
You got it? Okay. All right, we'll go on then to number six.
Great. So this is an agenda item request to consider adopting a resolution opposing California's Proposition 50. This came from Councilmember Kay, supported by Mayor Hagan. And with that brief lead-in, I will turn it over to the proposer.
I want to start by saying, while this is a partisan issue taking place in our state, my partisan beliefs have played absolutely no part in my decision to bring this before council and ask for a resolution opposing this. Strictly, our purpose, and my purpose, in bringing this forward to the community, is that Escalon specifically is being singled out of the county of San Joaquin and being removed from District Nine that we currently have preside in, which basically encompasses all of San Joaquin County. So all of our supervisors that were here today, you know, every city that they represent, all of us are tied together under one congressional leader. That congressional leader currently is Josh Harder. Met with him a few weeks ago, a couple months ago, was a pleasure, you know, enjoyed meeting with him. My concern for us being removed from our own county is not only are we being geographically removed from where we belong and where, you know, we exist, but we also will be being thrown into a district that is a foothill district, and it is a long-held foothill district where the current congressman that holds that seat has held that seat for a decade. Basically, he might as well run unopposed, he will never lose his seat. That being the case, I do not see we are ever going to be able to contact our congressperson and say, hey, we want to meet and talk about something, and actually have his ear the way that we do someone that actually cares about us when we are in a competitive district currently. That's the basis of me bringing this forward. Like I said, my partisan politics are completely out of the conversation in my line of thinking, and I'm looking strictly at the way that this affects the city of Escalon, and how I truly believe that whether this is intended to be temporary or long-term, regardless, it is not going to be good for the city of Escalon. So that's about all that I had to say about it.
Okay. Any other thoughts up here?
Sure. I just want to say thank you to Councilmember Kay and Mayor Hagan for bringing this forward. It has my full support.
Thank you. Anything, Pro Tim, before I take it out to the public?
Take it out to the public.
Okay. Anyone in the public have any thoughts on this, or concerns, or anything? Okay, bring it back to the, to the online?
Going online.
Bring it back to the dais?
Sure, looking at the maps of the before and after of this redistricting, and what it actually does is just amazing how California is trying to push this through, so this has my full support.
Okay. Do we have any motion, then?
I'm motion to adopt a resolution opposing California Proposition 50, Use of Legislative Congressional Redistricting Map Amendment.
I will second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, we'll go on to number seven.
Okay, thank you. This is another agenda item request, and it is to consider new and additional equipment for the Escalon Police Department. This was requested by Mayor Hagan and supported by Councilmember Ingalls.
So I'll give you my thoughts on it. I came to understand that our police aren't fully protected with their gear, and I think that is unacceptable. I think that we should be putting them in a position to succeed against any kind of threat, whether it's a rifle threat or handgun. And right now, you could have the baseline rifle, and it would be all you need. So I think that's, like I said, unacceptable. I think that some of the stuff that they're looking for puts us and puts our safety of citizens in a better spot, depending on the type of threat that potentially could come into our town. And I think that it's better to be proactive and then be reactive. So that's why I feel like it's important to bring this to the dais, to have a discussion and see where the mindset of the rest of the council is. So that being said, does anyone have any thoughts on this?
I'll just put it out there, I think that it's important that our police are equipped to be able to handle any potential threat and be at least equally, or if not, better protected and armed. I think this should be of the utmost priority. While Escalon may seem sleepy at times, it really just does take that one instance or one occurrence to potentially find out that we're underprotected or undergunned, and I don't think that should be the case. I think this is a small ask, a small amount out of the general fund to ensure that our police force has everything that they feel that they need in order to keep us safe.
Any other thoughts up here before I take it to the public?
I would just like to say that our officer's safety is of the utmost importance, and I appreciate both of you bringing this forward as an agenda item, and you guys have my full support with it.
Anything, Pro Tim, before I go to the public?
I'm concerned about new and changing technologies and new and changing times, and we have our own technology that has not been keeping up with a lot of the threats of right now, of this current time. So anything that the police, Escalon police, feel that they need that would keep them safe from increasing outside threats has my support, so, that's it.
Want to take it out to the public? Excuse me, anyone have any thoughts or concerns or any position on it? Okay, or anyone online? Okay, or anyone online? All right, we'll bring it back. Excuse me, any last thoughts or motions?
I did just have a question about the number. Is, is the number correct, Chief? Did that, the number that's on item number seven at $19,000 total? I thought I saw a number somewhere else that was slightly higher. We want to make sure that.
Yeah, so it's, those are, I think the, the 7,350 for armor and then 13,419, or 400, sorry, 13,420 for the rifles. I think on the initial proposal, I did increase the initial ammunition cost or initial ammunition purchase. So we'd have more to, for the initial deployment and for training. The total cost would be $20,770.34.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that number, please? And that did not include the 1,000 rounds of duty armor and 3,000 rounds of, of target ammo?
I believe I increased the target ammo an additional 1,000 rounds. So I think I, the proposal I put together, the first one was 1,000 rounds duty, 2,000 rounds training. And then in the subsequent one, I did 1,000 rounds duty, 3,000 rounds training.
And that's included in that 20,770.34? Thank you.
All right.
I, I'd like to make a motion to approve the new and additional equipment for the Escalon Police Department. I quoted currently at $20,770.34.
I will second that motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. And we'll go on to number eight.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Last item of the night. Before you is consideration of a professional services agreement with MCR Engineering. For many years, we have worked with Ardura Engineering since about 2014. Actually, they started as Gianni and Cole, and then were purchased by Ardura last year in 2024, just to ensure we were getting competitive rates and the highest quality service. We did go out for an RFP for these services. At that time, we received two proposals. The best proposal was clearly from Ardura. Unfortunately, in this last year, they have lost a significant amount of staff. Nearly 100% of the staff that was working with us. And therefore, we decided to go back out for an RFP. We had better response this time. We did have four total proposals, two, three very, very good proposals. Tough decision. Ultimately, we have chosen MCR, who does work for a number of other cities around here. Houston, Riverbank, Oakdale, and Waterford, Oakdale and Waterford. And so we felt they were the overall best fit for what we need at this time. And you will see here, we are proposing a two-year term, two years to ensure it's a good fit for both sides. Candidly, we want to make sure they are not too busy and they have enough capacity for us. And, you know, we'll see if it works both ways. So two years is enough to evaluate that. And then if things are going well, there is an option for extending an additional three years.
Okay.
So.
Any thoughts up here?
Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
That's what I was gonna say. Any thoughts up here?
I just question for staff. How does the cost compare to Ardura's previous contract?
Costs are very comparable. The number you will see in the staff report is, is the 530,000. That's across the five years. It's about 106,000 per year. That is what we have averaged over the last several years with Ardura. And just to walk through what that is, that is not just expenditures without any revenue. Much of it, and I don't have an exact number, but much some of it is offset with fees. So this is engineering reviews of projects like Murphy Ranch, Solana Ridge, the Red Barn. You know, when engineering is looking at conditions of approval, maps, whatever it may be. So much of that cost is offset by application fees. It is other projects that we have them do, you know, either some sort of map updates. We were working with SSGID on some work that they had to do near our boundaries, and, and we needed some engineering, library projects, the unwired project, Liberty Business Park utilities. So those types of projects, any sort of council requests, if there's a look into speeds or stop signs or speed bumps or those types of things, that's, of course, comes out of the general fund. And then construction inspection. We do have a building inspector. We also need sort of the onsite improvement, you know, the water sewer, that type of thing. We have that, the engineering company do those types of inspections, Weldway, Brayton, for instance. Those are offset with fees as, yeah, fee, application fees as well. So that's generally what the 106,000 is comprised of. Of course, there is more that is funded and not included in this number. There is more that is provided directly through either grants or outside monies, we'll call it, state and federal monies that we have specifically for projects, for design, for construction management, that type of, of thing. So that is, that is what those costs are associated with. And it's, we don't know, but we believe it'll be very comparable to what Ardura was charging.
Yeah, I'm not seeing any issue with this myself, but I don't know how the rest of the council sees it. Unless I'm, unless I'm missing something.
If you're missing something, I'm missing it as well.
Okay.
I have a quick question, though. Will this, and this is not due to the, the company that we choose, it's just the situation where we're going from Ardura to another company right now. Will this put back, push back any of the projects that we are currently in or any of the projects we are about to enter into that would involve MCR?
Yeah, not any of the immediate projects. MCR has been gracious to start prior to contract award. We have already started our transition meetings. We are meeting with Ardura staff and MCR staff to begin to transition tasks, to get them up to speed with the projects. We don't think the transition will lead to any delays in project funding, may, but not the transition.
Okay. Any, any thoughts from the public at all? Okay, I'll bring it back online. Okay, back to the dais.
If anyone has anything else to say on the subject, I will make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with MCR Engineering Incorporated. It's necessary for me to continue to read the rest of that, is it?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, and we'll go to council communications. So, Councilman Kay.
I'd just like to thank all of you for supporting the agenda item that I brought. Again, thank you guys for bringing the original item forward. I sure appreciate it. We, we want our officers to be safe. That is absolutely of the utmost importance. So kudos to you guys for bringing that forward. Aside from that, everyone have a lovely evening.
Councilman Engel?
Yeah. Hey, I just want to say, good job, council. This is what a council meeting should look like. Thank you. I appreciate that a ton. And I want to say thank you to the county for coming out and, and, you know, showing Escalon a little bit of love and bringing some folks out. That was, that was very kind and, and appreciated on my part. Thank you.
Pro temp?
Sure, I'll second that. Thanks to San Joaquin County for coming out. I'm a proud member of San Joaquin County and proud member of Escalon. And he mentioned Valley Days that goes on every year for our schools. And it was a, one of those memories in the back of my mind that I forgot that I even had back there. But we had a 100-year celebration and we had Valley Days back in my middle school years. Had a big parade, and I appreciate San Joaquin County for supporting all of that back then, supporting us now and coming out for this. The second thing I'd like to say is I'm, I'm glad we're, we're getting our police everything that we need here. Make sure that, you know, the changing times, changing threats, that everybody stays kind of vigilant. Support our Escalon police officers and see something, say something, and make sure that we're having that relationship with our police. And, yeah, and you can go out to coffee with a cop on October 24th and get to know your local police. Because not everybody has the benefit of having a local, a local police department who participates in their community. So I'm just honored, honored to be here all around. So that's it. Thank you.
I can't really beat that. I think you pretty much summed everything else up that I had to say other than the homecoming parade went well and everyone participated in that. And so other than that, obviously, I'm happy to see the agenda go through today and the way it did. I feel like we're starting to really get through these meetings a little quicker and, and a little more streamlined. So that being said, I don't have anything else to add.